Good morning, everyone. It is the appointed hour. We have a quorum present, and therefore I will be calling this meeting to order. This meeting will be conducted in compliance with Nebraska's open meeting laws, the copy of which is on the back wall. Would you please join me for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would ask that people silence their phones. We do have an automatic defibrillator in the back of the chamber. If anybody has a heart attack, let us know. Mr. Ash, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Borgeson?
Here.
Commissioner Boyle?
Here.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Here.
Commissioner Kraft?
Here.
Commissioner Morgan?
Here.
Commissioner Rogers?
Here.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Here. Thank you. This is the Douglas County Board of Equalization. Item A is the approval of the minutes from May 5th, and item B is to set June 2nd as the date for a hearing on certified assessment corrections. What is the pleasure of the board?
Second.
Okay. This new seating arrangement takes a little getting used to.
Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Morgan.
Okay. Questions or comments to items A or B? Then could we please vote?
I vote yes.
Is it registering the votes?
I am trying to pull up the... Motion passes seven to zero. Six voted in person, one virtually.
Thank you. Citizen comments? Would anybody like to address the Board of Equalization? On something not on the agenda? Okay, right. Okay. We have resolutions D, E, F, G, and H, I, and J. Is there any of these items that anybody would like pulled out for individual attention? We're going through the Board of Equalization referees and procedures here. I think everybody knows with our current situation with the social distancing, we're losing the wing rooms, which we have used for many years for Board of Equalization meetings, the in-person meetings. But under threat of a court order, the courts are taking over the legislative chamber for jury, impaneling jury duty coming up for the next several weeks. So our overcrowded courthouse is spilling over into our corner of the world. We aren't sure what we're going to do on Board of Equalization because we're losing our space. We're trying to...
If I may, Dan Ash, Douglas County Clerk. We're gonna... Dot com, you know, the threat of the court order, that's new to me, but I do know they needed the space.
Right.
And we were looking at the C level on Dot com, the training room. Now, obviously, we can't have in-person meetings down there, but we have enough for about eight workstations down there for referees to use. They'll be socially distanced, and when they're down there, they'll just be doing, you know, taking care of protests where there was no appointment requested, or where the appointment is like a phone appointment.
Okay.
But all the in-person, anybody who wants an in-person meeting, those would take place on farnum level.
All right. Well, working with the clerk's office, yes, we're trying to figure out what the process is. We would like to do meetings telephonically, but...
Claire?
Yes?
Maybe if you had a few minutes to have Catherine come down to the mic.
Would you like to speak, Catherine, or have I said too much already?
Well, maybe Doug's up now, but maybe I thought Catherine might have a couple of questions for...
Well, did you have anything you want to add to the... We're still working on, we prefer the telephonic meetings, but state law says we have to offer in-person meetings, and those are going to be a logistic challenge. That's what we're working with right now, is how can we have in-person meetings? Where? How do we do it? We would prefer telephonically, so we're working with the state on that. But that's part of what's going on here within the Board of Equalization.
If I may, real quick, sorry, Mr. Kagan. I should be more... The... I had heard secondhand about a potential court order, but no one from the courts had.
And I don't mean...
So I just wanted to make sure, I didn't want to be misleading.
Well, and I don't mean to say that we're in conflict with the courts, because obviously we're working with them, but I did get a call from Judge Peter Battalion saying they need to be impaneling juries here for, they have five jury trials to catch up on, and they have need of the chamber with the wing rooms. We finally negotiated that county board and city council can still have two meetings next month. City councils actually having to give up one of their meetings because the chamber won't be available.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Thank you. The space question is an interesting one in light of the fact that, as we're all aware, we've purchased significant space adjacent to our campus at the OJ building across the street. What's the status of that building, and why can't we use space in that building?
That is not, I mean, we're... I don't know the status of that building. We're talking about resolutions for Board of Equalization.
Patrick May.
All right, I'm official. So, and Catherine can possibly speak to this, but one of the issues with that building is that we would have to set up all of the technology and the communications, technology communications, and Catherine can probably speak to that. All things being equal, that certainly is space that we could consider if we can make it work. I mean, we're looking at, we have talked about this in the past, about going off-site, but the hang-up with that has always been trying to make the technology work. So Catherine could add to that, but that's certainly something, yeah, if we could have something across the street, and we could make everything work, that would be great. But I guess I'd ask Catherine to speak to that.
Thank you.
Doug, well, you'll have an opportunity for input before we take any action. Catherine?
Yeah, I don't have much more detail to add, except for that there have been some conversations with the clerk's office, Dot com and the building commission about alternate locations should the wing rooms not be available. And so one of the concerns would be adapting technology. We have all the referee workstations to set up, and the clerk scanning and check-in stations. And I believe there's some concerns in the adjacent building about maybe accessibility of restrooms in this potential workspace. So we've worked through some different ideas for moving off-site, and I think at this time, one of our better options remains the C level for referee workstations where they're making calls, but not doing in-person appointments.
So Catherine, just one second. So we are exploring these options as far as having space for our referees and...
Yes. Yep, we're actively looking through it. It's the potential of the unavailability, the LC wing rooms here is relatively new news, so we're just working through what other alternative locations we can come up with in the event they're not available.
And I saw some indications in some of the emails about timelines on here. So what kind of timeline are you working on?
Well, during the month of June, protests can be submitted, and so we're working on a very short timeline. Protests will be coming in, by June 1st is the first date they can come in. And so we're working on a timeline to set up appointments and operate, I guess, all the different appointments we'd be doing, is ideally phone appointments as our primary appointment opportunity, and then in-person if someone requests it.
But isn't there some consideration of pushing the backend farther out?
Oh, sure. So there is, you're right, there's, I'm sorry, I don't have the agenda in front of me, I left it back at my chair, but it's...
It's item F that we're about to vote on.
Thank you. Yes, thank you. Item F is an option the board has, that counties of our size can take the option to extend the deadline to review, because there's so many more to review. So it's still, it doesn't change the, the period of June is still in which the time in which property owners submit their protest. It doesn't change that, but it gives you, as the Board of Equalization and your referees, additional time to review before you take action.
Thank you.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Thank you for what you do, and I know you work hard on all this. The statute provides that they do have to be in-person interviews, I think is the way it is right now.
We, the statute does say, should provide an opportunity to meet in person to discuss the protest, and we sought clarification from the state, and they've clarified guidance that we must still offer in-person appointment opportunities, but we are able to offer alternatives as well. And so we're going to recommend that property owners pursue alternative phone appointments whenever possible.
Right.
And appointments are just an option in the first place.
But if a person says, hey, I want an in-person interview, then we're going to make somehow arrangements, and if I can be helpful to you or any of us, we want to be. Lastly, I'd just say that, you know, with what's going on with this virus, I mean, things have really certainly changed dramatically as far as values in the last two, three months since we've been going through this, and we'll see what happens. I mean, there's a part of me that whatever some of the homes were valued at six months ago, that value has substantially changed, or especially some of the commercial retail properties with what's happened. I mean, because people aren't able to pay their rent and so on. But we'll see what happens, so.
Yes. Final values should be going out. I think they must be out by June 1st, and certainly...
Right.
Mr. Goodwin could speak to that in better detail, but the final values should be coming shortly.
Yes. Well, thank you very much.
Although I would also point out, we're searching for the value as of January 30, or January 1.
That's correct.
That anything that has happened since then, we don't take into account until next year.
There is, those values are still changing. I mean, not publicly, but I mean, I know the assessor's office works hard in continuing that values change, and people do see that as they look at their computers and the value, you know, three weeks ago compared to maybe this week.
Commissioner Borgeson?
Are the courts also looking for alternative space? Seems to me that they should be doing that as well. It'd be easier, I think, to move a group than it would be to try to figure out multi-levels of having referees.
Yes, they are. We've looked at perhaps the Rose Theater, but you run into a lot of security problems, issues with having to get the jury pool moved over and back and everything. There's a lot of logistical problems with doing that. This is not the only jury call that will be going on at this time. They will be doing some over in the courthouse at the same time. They've got so many backlog juries to be, cases to be catching up on now that they need all the space they can get.
As do we for Board of Equalization.
Indeed. Further comments? And this is to the motion before us of resolutions D through J. Doug, did you wish to address this before?
Good morning. Doug Kagan, 416 South 130th Street, representing Nebraska taxpayers for freedom. Our taxpayer group would like commissioners, instead of deliberating each year about extending the deadline for hearing valuation protests, to permanently extend the time period into August. Now, since I wrote that, I found that state law requires an annual vote, but we'd like you in the foreseeable future to vote to extend the time. Especially this year, county property owners face a devastating loss in savings and investments, and business owners face a steep decline in revenues because of the unexpected COVID-19 outbreak. Commercial and residential property owners are facing vacated space and non-payment of rents. All citizens are making financial adjustments. An extension would give them all additional time to assemble their protest paperwork. This Board of Equalization may find it impossible to hear the pleas of beleaguered property owners within a shorter period of time. Furthermore, we urge commissioners to press our county assessor to actually freeze property valuations for the current year to neutralize a spike in county valuations that will cause additional financial hardship through higher property taxes. I'm not a real estate professional, but I can tell you that in my own neighborhood, valuations have spiked enormously, whereas home sales precipitously have slumped because of the virus outbreak. Home buyers may have difficulty obtaining loans to purchase homes. I would speculate that home values have declined. Homeowners who have lost their employment temporarily or permanently may have difficulty paying current or higher property taxes. The governor announced yesterday that property tax relief from the state might be less than expected. Therefore, property valuation freeze would ease the personal financial squeeze. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. Any other comments?
Neither do I, because I don't see your light.
But would you like to speak, Commissioner Boyle?
I don't know how that all works.
Well, we're learning a new system. We're getting there.
All right, anyway, what I wanted to say is I agree with Mr. Kagan about, I think we ought to be engaging in talks with the assessor's office about freezing the valuations where they were. I've had calls from some, not only taxpayers who own their homes, but also from businesses that are really, really, really struggling. And so we need to be realistic about this and just to go on ahead like nothing's happened and have increases, I think is not realistic. So, Mr. Chair, I'd like to ask you if you would contact the assessor to begin some kind of talks about, I mean, either that or have the Board of Equalization, don't involve her and just look at all the valuations and take them one at a time and roll them back or whatever. Something's got to happen, so.
I would remind the board, this is the January 1st value that we're looking for here for what it's worth.
Well, whenever it happens, I'm saying it. What we ought to do is be looking at rolling them back so that they don't take effect. Commissioner Morgan and I have talked about this, and I'm very concerned about it as well, but not only the homeowner, but the business owner as well. So whatever we can do to look at those before they go into effect is what I'd like to do.
Okay, thank you.
Maybe we can have the BOE actually do some work.
Mr. Bowman?
Good morning. My name is Monty Bowman with Averus. Two of the items that I was going to bring up, I agree, and we were concerned because I'm working in quite a few other states, and all of them have extended either filing or the period in which they're going to hear the protests. That was another subject that I was bringing up as well, and people are going to need more time, because we're not seeing any business owners, we're not talking with anybody, this is the last thing they're worried about, are their protests this year. They're not even, they haven't even started thinking about them. They won't even until sometime, maybe in June. So the time period for them to really start even preparing a protest is going to be impossible. I don't know how any of them are going to do it. Most of them won't have the time to do it. The main item that I had brought up was four years ago, the county assessor reassessed all the industrial flex mall buildings. We ran into a very big problem, and that's the spreadsheet that I gave you, and there's a handout, because the county assessor is either going to have these as commercial or industrial, that's their zoning, but then when they tell you who they're going to reassess, industrial flex mall is one group, and all of those can be used as a comp if they're flex mall buildings. You've got to, of course, apply to the rules of age and condition and so on. But instead, what they're doing is they're looking at the page which says it's an industrial flex mall built as, but then they're looking at the picture of the building, and to the right of every one of them, somebody makes a note on what they think that building is. So they've abbreviated industrial flex mall to where sometimes it says flex mall, flex warehouse, industrial flex mall, industrial flex building, or a flex warehouse. So they're looking at it, saying, okay, all of these are subclasses of industrial flex, and that doesn't exist. It's all supposed to be industrial flex mall. Those pictures, that's not a, that's just a description of what you're seeing for the building, and somebody abbreviated it. But the referee decision from four years ago shows you that they're getting confused, and they're thinking, okay, if it says flex warehouse in the picture, all of the comps have to be flex warehouse. That's not, that's not how they break these down. So the pictures are deceiving, because to the right, somebody's putting in a description, some of them don't even put down what they think the building is, so it's left blank. But the referees are looking at that and saying that they're breaking down further for comps, and they shouldn't be doing that. And we have sent this to the county assessor for them to address as well. They haven't answered back, but that's, that's a real big concern right now. The other concern is, and this is where PJ Morgan will understand this subject the best, brokers' price opinions and comparative market analysis for the last two or three years, and the statute is attached there as well, that says that these are evidence of value that can be used specifically for property valuation protest hearings. This becomes a conflict, because appraisers don't want the competition, but they're getting their information to put together appraisals from the brokers. And the brokers are the ones who put together these broker price opinions or comparative market analysis, and somebody has to educate the referees that these are good value, good evidence, they have to accept them. That's the other thing they're not doing. So it's just a matter of educating these referees on not just being an appraiser, they've got to understand some of the other rules. That's, that's what's been causing a big conflict. That's pretty much it.
All right. Thank you, Monty. Appreciate your input.
Thanks.
Are there any other comments before we vote on the Board of Equalization items, resolutions?
Mr. Chair, if I may, I just, I didn't mean to spring C level on you guys at the meeting, but it's a relatively new, it's not a new idea, but we basically heard within the last 24 hours that it was something Dot com thought could work, and so, and I haven't really had much communication with the group of people I'm normally working with, the CA. We still think this is a good idea, but we do believe that the C level would work if we need to move out of the wing rooms, which I'm, so, anyway.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. All right, Mr. Bowman?
Most of the, and I've talked to a lot of taxpayers over the last couple of months, they would probably, you're not going to have a big problem, they're going to want to do these by telephone conference, the majority of the people. I don't think you're going to have a lot of people wanting hearings in the first place, because I know we're going to want to do all of ours by phone if we can, anything while this is going on. Electronics probably going to be the way everyone. Just having the option, though, that's it. Just by that option, I would take that option this year.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes, we intend to offer phone, telephone meetings as first choice, and if somebody requests a, an in-person meeting, we'll try to accommodate them. Okay, I'm going to, if the maker and seconder of the motion are okay, I'm going to add an adjournment when we take the vote on this from Board of Equalization. We have no need for exec session.
Apologize, could you repeat who the motion, the second, was?
Commissioner Rogers and Commissioner Morgan.
Thank you.
So this is for the resolutions on the Board of Equalization agenda and to adjourn. Could you please vote?
I, motion passes. Trying to see who I didn't give...
Commissioner Boyle.
Oh, Commissioner Boyle, I'm sorry. Motion passes, five voting yes, one virtually, and Commissioner Boyle is absent.
Thank you. We will call together the Board of Corrections. Could we please have the roll call for that?
Yes. Commissioner Borgeson?
Here.
Commissioner Boyle has stepped away. Commissioner Kavanaugh? Commissioner Kraft?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Here.
Commissioner Rogers?
Here.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, thank you. First item for consideration is approval of the minutes from the March 10th meeting. Motion? Commissioner Rogers and Commissioner Borgeson move in second. Approval of the minutes. Questions or comments? Could we please vote on item one?
Give me one moment, please. Okay, thank you. Commissioner Borgeson, I cut it off before I got your vote. Did you vote yes?
No.
Okay. Motion passes, five voting yes, present, or in person, one voting yes virtually, Commissioner Boyle is absent.
Thank you. Citizen comments? Would anybody like to address the Board of Corrections on any item not on the agenda? This would be the opportunity to do so. What, I know Mr. Myers is out of town on personal business.
He was just going to give us a... Written and then come back the next time and do full reporting?
Okay, fine, fine. So we all have copies of the monthly, and when Mr. Myers is back in town, we will get his report. So I guess that's it for Board of Corrections. No need for exec session. A motion to adjourn from Board of Corrections. Could we please vote? Well, I'll just declare it. We're adjourned. We don't have to vote on that. Okay, now, let us call to order the Douglas County Board of Commissioners meeting. Could we please have the roll call, Dan?
Commissioner Borgeson?
Here.
Commissioner Boyle has stepped away. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Here.
Commissioner Kraft?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Commissioner Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Chair.
Okay, that brings us then to the consent agenda, where we have items A through P.
Mr. Chair, if I may, we need to do the minutes and claims.
Oh, I missed the claims. Okay, excuse me. Okay, A and B, minutes from May 5th and claims through May 26th. We have a motion. Do we have a second? I'll second that. Okay, Commissioner Borgeson seconds. Okay, so items one, A and B. Questions or comments to those? Then could we please vote?
Motion passes, six voting yes in person, one virtually.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda. We have items A through P. Are there any items that anybody would like pulled out for individual attention or discussion? Questions? Seeing none, I would call for the vote, please.
I vote yes.
I vote yes.
Motion passes, six voting yes in person, one voting yes virtually.
Thank you. Citizen comments? Anybody wish to address the County Board of Commissioners on any item not on the agenda? This is the appropriate opportunity. Good morning.
From Omaha, Nebraska. One of the items that I would like to have you to please consider is making a COVID report part of your standing agenda until we get through this pandemic. I think that people should be able to have firsthand, I guess, explanations of the data. Your, your website is perfect, but there's always a story and behind the data. And I think to help with data transparency, to give people who do not have access to Facebook and the internet access to competent, reliable information by having a COVID report will really help dispel some of the myths and fears and stress the importance of this virus until we get through this pandemic. A lot of the elderly people who I talk with on a daily basis to check in with them, they don't have access to Facebook. And the blurb that the news media give is not sufficient information. And even when I try to explain the process to them, I feel incompetent because I'm not the health director. So I would just ask you to please consider making a standing agenda item until we get through this pandemic, a weekly COVID update report. Thank you.
Thank you, Levon. Is there anybody else that would like to address this group?
Claire, I was trying to respond to her. I don't know how to turn my microphone. How do you ask for?
Okay, go ahead.
I turn my button and it turns red. Do you see it?
That means your microphone is on. Uh, no, it does not. It does not, it does not show up on my.
So how do I get a message to him?
Well, it's, when your mic turns green, he's supposed to get something on his thing that shows up that you're in the queue to speak.
I guess we can talk about it later, but I don't want to have to flag you down all the time. I will, though.
Are you finished?
The quick comment that I wanted to make is that I, I agree with you completely. The difficulty is that, you know, that when we make the report, it's on Cox Communications, and a lot of people don't have the internet, don't have all the, even the television, you know? And I'm wondering what, because we've had talks about that before, about how to reach people who don't have the internet to get information. I'm not sure what's the best way to do it here, from here. Is there any, you know, somebody who's technical?
A lot of the people with whom I talk with, they do have access to either Cox or some other type of cable television. And it's easier than having access to the internet through Facebook. And some people just don't even want to go on Facebook. I think I'm the only Facebook junkie in Omaha. But I think that it's important that we utilize Cox and utilize, I think it's, your, just your show or your meeting, it's broadcast on, besides Cox, the other, the other satellite channels. And so, it's just a suggestion that we make.
I guess what I'd like to do is to ask somebody who's technical how, how we can reach people who don't, don't use Cox or, you know, I don't, I don't have Cox at home for television, so I can't get these meetings at my own home because I use YouTube TV. I don't use Cox for television.
Well, you might not be able to reach everybody, but it's a start by making it part of the report. And even people like us who rely on this data, I think it coming from you guys is more reliable than what you see circulating.
Diane, is her name Diane Wallace? Is that her name? Turn her into technical. Thanks a lot. I agree with you. Thank you.
Any other citizen comments?
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Ben Salasad, 1703 Ontario Street, South Omaha. I'm here officially in my capacity as Director of La Casa del Pueblo. It's a 501(c)(3) organization. But I'm also, I dropped off some flyers with Mr. Boyle earlier for your review. It, our original announcement that we made several weeks ago, and at the bottom, you will see some of my partners in this effort to assist families in South Omaha. Briefly in reference to what Ms. Senna's just mentioned about reaching the communities, and in particular, north and south communities, because the numbers have revealed that this pandemic virus has disproportionately impacted black and brown communities. And my Latino community has been devastated. And we're all sitting on pins and needles because we don't know the reality of what's going on in the packing houses in South Omaha. The governor has not seen fit yet to enforce some kind of a mandate or rule requiring that these packing houses reveal their numbers of positives coming out from their workforce. That's important information, and I, I think that at least we have to note that here at the county level, that that has yet to be implemented or done voluntarily by these packing houses, because it's not just potentially impacting the workers, of which there are several thousand, working in these packing houses in South Omaha, but their families as well. When you get a chance, I want you to please review that, that announcement we made several weeks ago. And I want to cite, in particular, my partners in this collaborative effort, which are the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, South Omaha Business Association, the Latino Peace Officers Association, Grace United Methodist Church, and of course, La Casa del Pueblo. Our primary mission, as will, you will read there on this announcement, is to assist families directly, raising funds to assist them with either vouchers or cash. And to ensure, or try to ensure that that money is recycled, we also reached out to the food markets in the area of South Omaha, the three primary markets, which I believe are Family Fair and Supermercazos. I think they all come under the same ownership, but we're working with them to see if we can't create some kind of a partnership or at least a collaborative effort with them. Let me read something, because even though we don't have a command post, and I think maybe Levon would agree with me at least on this, on this principle, which is, I have already urged people at political office to see why a command post hadn't been established for South Omaha. I can't speak for North Omaha, but for South Omaha, because many of our residents also encounter the same difficulties that Levon just described, which is computer. We don't have a lot of folks that have computers or computer literacy. Facebook and Twitter and all those things are, you know, something out in the universe but haven't reached many of our residents. So actually, we had people going into the community and dropping off flyers. They've gone to businesses in South Omaha, dropping off flyers like this announcement, samples of our applications for assistance, which are bilingual. And I have copies of, of those that I probably would like to drop off as well. But I also want to la, take a couple of seconds to laud the bravery, the commitment and the passion of our, of the ladies that I work with, the women who are leading so much of this effort, particularly in South Omaha. Some of my partners, who are female Latinas, were the ones that took the flyers and walked down the streets in South Omaha, handing out flyers, taping up flyers, handing out applications, walking down these streets, which I think takes a lot of courage. But not just the ladies in South Omaha, but throughout the affiliated colleagues that we have, not just on this effort, but with my South Omaha Juvenile Justice Forum, which includes Douglas County, by the way. And some of those folks are predominantly females. So I, I, I want Omaha to take note that these are our brave soldiers in this fight against this pandemic. I think the majority are, happen to be females. So I hope everyone recognizes that fact, that, that we have strong women out there acting as warriors on behalf of the community. With regard to the CARES Act.
Ben, Ben, you've had your five minutes.
Has it been?
This isn't even the right place on the agenda for this. I didn't want to interrupt you, but you have had your five minutes, and we'll be getting to the CARES Act soon. It's not, we're not there on the agenda yet. This is citizen comments or anything not on the agenda.
Oh, I didn't even know it was on the agenda.
Well, it's two items down.
Okay, I'm sorry. Excuse my impudence. Does that mean I come back?
Well, you've had your five minutes. I, I, we've got a lot of people that want to speak.
Okay.
With apologies, we give everybody five minutes.
That means I can't come back. We'll debate, we'll debate that in a couple of minutes.
We give everybody five minutes.
If I can't, that's fine. If I can't, that's fine. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. Appreciate, appreciate your input. Anybody else wishing to speak not on the CARES Act funding? That's later in the agenda. We're only talking about things that are not on the agenda. Is there anybody else that would like to address something that is not on the agenda? Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Juanita Johnson, and I come to you today with a heavy heart. Mr. Duda, I understand that you said that we shouldn't be coming here at this time regarding the CARES Act. However, Mr. Boyle asked the question, which was, what else can be done to educate the community besides Cox Cable? And my solution, I presented in a proposal to Commissioner Rogers. We have recycle kiosks throughout Omaha. I love, I just lost a loved one because we are not providing the education to safeguard against this disease. So I'm advocating that we do all that we can to put as much information in the hands of those that are not fortunate enough to have internet and other means of communication. And I'm asking my leadership, which is the prize of you today, to consider that. Thank you.
Thank you, Juanita. Is there anybody else that would like to address this board on anything not on the agenda? Good morning, Larry.
Larry Store, 501-5 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha 68132. I have to agree with our first speaker here today. And I think a lot of the problem is people don't understand the rules. And according to the simple rules here, there's to be no two-way or discussion whatsoever during citizen comments. There often is. Other times, there often isn't. The first point is, who understands these agendas? And I don't see what this gentleman over here was talking about that you cut him off for.
I cut him off after his five.
I don't see anything on the agenda. Here you go, breaking the rules. I'm out of order. Thank you, but you are out of order for breaking the rules.
Wow. Who else wants to blast us during citizen comments? Good morning.
Good morning. Luis Jimenez, 3306 Burt Street. Something that's not on the agenda, but it's happening right now, Mr. Duda, is reci, dumpsters, the, the, over in North Omaha, they're going to be putting every month in the, or regularly in the next few months, so that the community can go and haul their trash to these dumpsters. And I think that's an opportunity for the community to be talking about things. It's already been organized, so that's going to happen. I encourage you guys to help us out. I've had an idea like that, but I haven't had the opportunity to speak with the landfill, the county landfill. But something regular like that where people, it's accessible to people, it's a good thing. So I, I hope that you'll consider that. On your citizens' comments, I would just suggest you take out this note that you have on citizens' comment, it's extraneous, and the, the Open Meetings Act is not like about shutting you guys down when, when you want to speak. If, Mr. Chair, you have a problem with the county attorney, that the board is breaking the Open Meetings Act, you can, you can take it to district court. This note doesn't need to be on the agenda and make it confusing for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to address this group?
I would like to address the group virtually.
Who is speaking?
This is Pastor Portia Cabot, Pastor of Clare Memorial United Methodist Church, 5544 Ames Avenue.
Good morning, Pastor Cabot. The floor is yours.
Thank you. I'd like to continue that conversation of making sure that information is accessible to those in our community. We do have KPAO, which is Public Access Channel 22 on Cox Cable, and I normally have a show for the love of you. This video could be played on KPAO as well as your report or the data with someone explaining the data to break it down. Also want to make sure that we are helping the community to have access to the testing. I appreciate all that is being done, but what if people do not have transportation and can't drive up to go get the test? In South Omaha, you have One World as well as the testing site there. In North Omaha, you have it in downtown, and we have Charles Drew Health Center. But I would like you to also consider North Omaha Area Health, the Noah Clinic, which is on the northwest side of North Omaha at 56 and Ames, that we would begin to work with them. Some people might have to walk up or be able to see a health provider if they are feeling sick. I want to also know, what are we doing when people are testing positive and we realize that they have underlying conditions? Are we assessing them, holding them overnight just to see how they are, making sure that they're breathing as well? We are getting the reports that we have the access and we have the beds and the ventilators, but we want to make sure that no one is perishing in the midst of this. And then, the mental health issue is going on now, seven to eight weeks, and pots are beginning to boil. People are beginning to be more depressed or not able to share. So how are we going to help those mental health providers that are in our community and especially in Omaha or in minority communities to help, who might not have access to healthcare since we have not done Medicaid expansion? So I just need this board to consider all of these things for those that are in our community that are less fortunate or in need, as well as the homeless community, those that are on the street. Will please address some of these issues since they are not on your agenda. Thank you.
Anybody, any further citizen comments? If not, we will move on to presentations. The first one is brief because there's nobody here from the census. I was asked by the Census Bureau to just remind people, they are getting, they, they shut down for a while for the pandemic. They are ramping things back up again with the census operations. Nebraska is one of the leaders in the nation in participation. We're doing very well, but they asked that we keep doing everything that we can to keep the census rolling forward. Thank you. That then brings us to our big item. CARES Act expenditures. This begins a new era for county government, something we've never been through before. We've never been through anything like this before. It's probably a one-time experience. Douglas County has, in our special account, received $166,134,258. We were given three and a half pages of guidelines of how this COVID relief fund should be used. Since then, they have been giving out more guidelines, more suggestions. What seemed rather clear-cut at the beginning is getting a little more gray in terms of what these funds can be used for. But I would like to begin by discussing the process that I hope the Douglas County Board uses. We have been in talks with the state of Nebraska. They are going to be retaining one of the big accounting firms, not Pricewaterhouse as was announced. That was incorrect. They are not ready to announce yet because they're still negotiating with the firm. But when they do, they recognize that Douglas County is looking But when they do, they recognize that Douglas County is looking for the exact same thing. We're looking for the firm that has the most expertise, is the easiest to work with, is anxious to work with us. We think it is at least many of us, and these are all decisions that will be made by the board. These are not my decisions to make. All I'm doing is making a recommendation to the board that I would like us to use the same accounting firm that the state does. The state hopes that by May 27th, they're ready to announce who that accounting firm is going to be. If they, if things do progress that quickly and we are comfortable with it, we can take action as early as June 2nd, two weeks from today. We should be ready, I hope, to sign a contract with one of the accounting firms to help, help guide us through the process. We are also going to be retaining a halftime dedicated staff person to oversee this, beginning June 1. We, we have a woman in mind that will be beginning June 1, working 20 hours a week through the end of the year. This is a retired county employee that has got a lot of, a lot of good expertise and savvy and should be very helpful in coordinating all of this from the county end. So we will have those processes in place. I am going to urge the board that we not make any commitments, that we not write any checks anytime soon. I want to have the processes in place first. There are many decisions that this board is going to have to make. Nobody can make them for us. What types of activities we think are the best use for these dollars? This is a lot of money. It's a lot of responsibility. It's a lot of opportunity. But I certainly hope that our goal is that remembering this is COVID relief. It is to help everybody around here who has been hit with unanticipated COVID expenses. This board will have decisions to make about, do we want to fund small businesses? We can, but if we do, we better have a process in place first. And I'm skeptical that we can get an adequate process in place. I personally am not leaning towards wanting to fund small businesses, but it's not my call to make. That's the call of the board. I would simply ask anything, whether it's small business, nonprofits, whatever we choose to get into, that we first set up a process and allow all similar small businesses or nonprofits or whatever we would be looking at, equal access, equal opportunity to the funds that are available. We can participate in rent assistance if we so choose. I'm not sure how we would set that process up, but these are all the decisions the board is going to have to make. I hope that our first priority is the out-of-pocket expenses that have already been incurred by both Douglas County and the various government, governmental entities within the county that I also hope we will accept responsibility for. The cities and towns within the county. The volunteer fire departments, you realize there's something like 60,000 people in Douglas County that are protected by volunteer fire departments. As a volunteer fireman, I'm pretty keenly aware of this. We haven't incurred much on pocket hills, but I know like Irvington had a crew that got exposed. These are volunteers, they had to quarantine for two weeks. The department paid them a stipend while they were quarantined because these are volunteers who are now missing work and not getting paid. These are the types of expenses that I hope we have at the top of our priority list. I have had the opportunity to have several conversations with the governor and, and various people in the state. I, I don't think it's a surprise to anyone that at the end of the day, I am hoping that the state and the county will come in together in partnership to meet the city of Omaha's needs. First, we have to agree on what those needs are, the state and the county and our auditing firm. This is why we aren't doing anything until we get the best auditing firm onboard that we can. We need some professional guidance in terms of how to move forward. But anything we do for one city, one volunteer fire department, one town, I hope we do for all of them. I hope we treat everybody equally. Other than the state has not indicated, and, and we've talked about the possibility of coming in together to meet Omaha's needs, those discussions have not occurred for the other counties.
Folks who are, sorry, Mr. Chair. Folks, would you, if you're attending virtually, if you would mind, mute yourself, please?
Hey, technology grand. Want Mike Wright to get a hammer out to help you with that computer, Dan? Thank you for that. There are, there are other government entities within the county, such as the Building Commission, that I hope we are cognizant of. The Building Commission, when we had somebody test positive in the courthouse and shut it down and all the deep cleanings and everything that go on. Everybody, everybody has incurred additional expense up till, to this point. And this is the COVID Relief Fund. That is its top priority, I believe, is to reimburse the unanticipated COVID-related expenses that everybody is incurring. We can't afford to do everybody. We have to have the processes in place before we can write a check to anybody. One thing that the county is very keenly aware of as we move forward is our risk. The way this is structured, if we give money to X, to somebody out there, and, and then we will get audited down the road, four, five years, whatever. When they come back, audit us, look at everything we say, they, they can say, that money you gave to X, whether it's a business or government, whatever, wasn't appropriate. They didn't spend it right. That wasn't a qualified expense. X doesn't matter to them. Douglas County has to pay that money back, and we have no recourse to come after X to get it. It's, we're on the hook. And therefore, we are going to want to do everything we can to keep our risk to a minimum, to proceed as cautiously as we can. And this is why I don't want to write any checks, make any commitments anytime soon until we have our processes in place. I, I think there are lots of entities out there that are already covered. We believe the K through 12 schools are, colleges are, airport is. Entities that already have another funding stream, we're not particularly planning on getting involved with. The city will have other funding streams, the city of Omaha, and, as may some of the other communities and entities. Congress isn't done shoveling out the money yet, and there could be more coming. So this is all going to be kind of in flux as we go forward. It's going to be a work in progress. We have till the end of the year to make these expenditures. The expenses have to, have been incurred this year. I hope that we have enough money left at the end of the year that we can look around and say, okay, these entities incurred these additional expenses, we would like to cover those. I think if we cover all of the government expenses early on in the process that have been incurred to date and set aside enough to do that again at the end of the year, there's going to be a lot of money left in between, I think. And that's the gray area. That's the places we can get dreaming and, and as can others in our community. And we will have a little bit of flexibility in what we do with some of those funds. So that's my pitch. Having said that, this begins the discussion. Commissioner Boyle was first one. I am going to let Commissioner speak first. Absolutely. And, and it, it was pointed out to me that you didn't really talk about COVID funding. You were talking about your nonprofit. So you, Ben, you are free to speak again. This is a different topic that we will be talking about, just to clarify. However, I do want to start with commissioners and, and probably if they're elected officials, everybody will get their opportunity to speak this morning, absolutely. Commissioner Boyle.
What I want to say, I'll try to be very brief, is that I do agree with your approach with using the same firm as the state of Nebraska. I think that makes a lot of sense. I'd like to suggest that we do focus on the nonprofits that are in the community that are doing work, and if there are ways that we can support their activities or organizations, I think that makes a great deal of sense. I've been asked to speak, Mr. Salazar and I are on the phone frequently, and I already suggested that we, one of the things that the South Omaha community needs, particularly the essential workers there, and they are essential, who work in the packing plants, who drive our buses, who do so much work for us that we sometimes don't notice, working in hospitals and so forth. They are folks who need some, some assistance. And what I'm looking, what I was asked to do was to help get face masks, and I brought that up and I was told we should wait, and so I'll wait for that. And I'll defer to the community about what needs to happen. But I would like us to focus on specific needs so that we can, if there's a housing need, we've got some people who do those things, and there's a whole host of organizations that are available, rather than duplicating the services. If we can possibly do that, that'd be great. I do think we need to listen, which we're going to, to the people on the ground who are in the community, who know what the problems are firsthand. And I think Mr. Salazar made an excellent presentation, as did you, about communication. And I think that's, that's really important, that we, that we do those things. I'm going to close my remarks with that and defer to other speakers. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And, and I don't, with technology, commissioners, you will kind of have to get my attention. I'm not sure how yet. I will know otherwise if anybody wants to speak. Any other commissioners wishing to speak at this time? Okay, Commissioner Cabot.
Thank you for that. You know, this is the largest amount in a single batch that Douglas County has ever received from the federal government. So I think that taking our time and determining the expenditures is an important thing. I'm interested in light of the fact that the bottom has fallen out of our economy in spending every single penny of the $166-plus million in Douglas County. That's going to be my guiding principle, and we are certainly going to be able to find lots of need. We've already heard publicly from our cities about their loss due to the COVID-19 thing. And I don't think it's any secret that we're going to face record unemployment. Businesses are going to be stressed. We need to take this opportunity to put $166 million into our local economy as quickly as possible. So I'm looking forward to that experience, and I think at the end of the year, we should have nothing, nothing left over to lapse to either the governor or to the federal government.
I think even this contentious board would unanimously agree that at the end of the day, we want to be down to zero. Commissioner Kraft.
Thank you. I wasn't sure if you could hear me.
No, Patrick just brought to my attention, so the floor is yours.
Okay, thank you. Whatever dollars, and the public and the different people asking us for money hopefully realize this, whatever dollars we allocate early on or dollars we cannot allocate later on to another needy organization. I personally feel we're going to find out this 166.12, whatever it is, million will not be sufficient. After reading what the city of Omaha said their expenses were, that's just a drop in the bucket. So we need to be careful how we allocate early on the money. And as your processes and your wisdom in running this is fantastic, and I thank you. I like the way you think on this. Maybe not on everything, but on this. Thank you.
Thank you. I paid him to say that.
I had to get that jabbed.
Commissioner Morgan.
Speaking, if there's something to add at the end, but I think, you know, we just need to be certain that we're following the guidelines and listening to everyone.
Very good. Thank you. I will open the floor up, although I'm going to, with apologies, start with elected officials. If there are any elected officials wishing to address us, I, I had told one or two mayors that they, so if any elected officials would like to address us, this is your opportunity, and absolutely everybody is going to get an opportunity before you're done. Good morning, Mayor Grosser.
Can I take this off and talk?
Yes.
Be a little easier.
Yes, we'll, we'll stay at least six feet away from you.
All right. My name is Don Grosser, 7770 Park Lane, Ralston, Nebraska. And I'm the mayor of Ralston, and I really appreciate the time you're giving me this morning to, and all the work that this board does on behalf of the Douglas County people. I don't know if you're bored right now. County government is on the front line of the COVID crisis. It is your health department that is bravely fighting the pandemic, person by person, and risking their own health to protect us. You manage many departments that are on the front line of the fight. Ralston is also doing our part as well. Ralston police are ensuring compliance to randomly checking restaurants and other businesses. After the city closed the park playgrounds, the police department patrolled our parks and educated the people who might not have been aware of our decision. Our police department has been instrumental in making the county's pandemic guidelines work effectively. Our volunteer fire department is, is exhibited the same kind of heroism as the metro and other first responders, answering all emergency calls when the danger on their own health is greatly magnified. While our COVID-related calls have been few in number, the preparation for response must be done, assuming the COVID is a possibility, no matter what the situation. Ralston was among the first to close its public library and offer remote services. We had to furlough library employees for the budget, but remains, the remaining staff is dedicated to curbside pickup process. They are now accepting book returns, quarantining the books for a period of time, and then cleansing them for their uses, next uses. Now, the county board is being asked how to decide to best distribute the funds to this crisis, the decision with profound implications to our communities in the metro area. I would just ask you to keep a few things, a few thoughts in mind. First, I urge the board to think locally and reflect uniquely on the needs of local governments that serve the major metropolitan area. You're a governmental body that has placed the address, the needs of Omaha, Ralston, Bennington, Boystown, Waterloo, Valley. All of our communities are on the forefront of the damp epidemic, pandemic, and you certainly understand our contributions. If our communities are asked to seek guidance from the state, we'll be requesting from leaders who aren't first in the unique needs of our cities that comprise a large part of our metro area. The COVID crisis impacted each Douglas County community differently, and it is a large part because we share resources and play different roles in the metro. That distinction will not be as clear to the state. Secondly, because each community in Douglas County has been impacted with the COVID differently, I urge the board to look at the decisions with flexibility. For instance, Omaha is rightfully concerned about the funding of their first responders who are on the front lines of the pandemic. And I would also locally suggest that public safety be the need, the criteria for our release. While Ralston will seek funding from our police and fire expenses, I urge the board to see the public safety, that the public safety is, cannot be impacted by the Kona, Kova, Kona expenses. COVID has created an unanticipated budget expenditures that must be funded. If the expenditures are not funded, budget restrictions will make, and made, public safety services will ultimately be jeopardized on being cut. Funding COVID.
Mr. Mayor, I apologize, and we, I need to make, we, we can't catch them, but apparently there's a conversation going on virtually. We've tried to mute everybody on our end, but there's a few of them that we can't mute for whatever reason. So if you're attending virtually, please mute yourself, because those outside of these chambers apparently can't hear Mayor Grosser that well because there's a conversation going on virtually that is not muted. So please do so. And, excuse me, thank you.
Oh, you're welcome. We do the same thing at our council meetings. So while Ralston is seeking funding, let's see, I've done it. With all this in mind, Ralston will be submitting a request to the board for 2.7 million in expenses associated with COVID. While this is a conservative estimate, we've only attributed 50% of our police and fire operational funding to COVID preparation and response. Our request also includes funding for the expenditures necessary to reopen our Ralston arena. Since the facility has been closed with the pandemic, expenditures necessary to reopen that facility are certainly within the current funding guidelines. It is important to understand that Ralston does not open arena. At some point, we won't be able to generate enough revenue necessary to meet our city's financial obligations. That will lead to a scenario that I outlined earlier, and the obligations will be funding at the expense of higher priority services like public safety. While we're not requesting this amount today... While we're not requesting this amount today, it is worth noting that we anticipate an additional 850,000 expenses that will be necessary to protect our employees and public, and public from Corona moving forward to the end of the year. We are entering a new world, one in which the Douglas County Board is deciding the fate of its municipalities. I urge you to think and act locally, view the federal cares funding flexibly, and consider the new Corona realities we face. Before the board considers whether to provide a local stimulus, I urge you to take care of the local governments who are protecting and providing critical services to our community. I am confident that the board's leadership will look to find solutions that will meet everybody's needs. I am at your service. My team at Ralston is at your service, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mayor Grosser. Are you okay on your muting for the moment, you think?
Well, someone texted me "thank you," so I think I'm hoping that did the trick.
All right, very good.
They're just for, you know, we can mute folks here, but there's a handful that, for whatever reason, it's probably user error, but I just can't figure out how to mute them. So anyway.
The new normal. Commissioner Borges.
Well, I just want to make a quick comment, that there may not be the other elected mayors that are here from Western Douglas County and in Douglas County, but they have been in contact with me, and I said we would, for sure, work with them. They didn't need to come down and come up to the microphone to tell us what their needs are. We would be definitely in communication with them.
This is part of why we will have a staff person as a point person, whatever, whatever we do for Ralston, I hope my plans would be, we'll treat Ralston and Omaha the same, other than we may have a funding partner with the city of Omaha. And so that's why we have to have a process, to have an accounting firm to help us with that, I think will, but absolutely, you don't have to be present today to be considered, you know, this will be a year-long process, and we're not going to fund every city except somebody that didn't show up today, because Waterloo wasn't here. Actually, no, they are here. I recognize that.
Well, and I guess I would just stress, in terms of our process, that I don't think we should look at the state just as a partner with Omaha. It was actually, there was a Congressman Brady from Texas, who is a ranking member of the House Ways and Means Committee this morning, who was talking on the news and reminded everybody that the state has dollars that they're to distribute to those cities and counties less than $500,000.
$500,000 people.
People.
Yeah.
And so I think when we talk about partnering with the state, we should be partnering them with everybody in whatever we do, outside of what the Douglas County needs are. So I just wanted to hope that that's part of our process and discussions as well.
Thank you. I know there's other people that want to speak, and this is the opportunity to do so.
Levon Stennis-Williams, 8919 North 56th Avenue Circle, Omaha, Nebraska. When I first heard you announce the stimulus money, the comment that I thought probably jilted me a little bit was when you said your name was going to be on that check, and you were going to make sure, the documents, and you were going to make sure that money is spent well. Well, the first thing I came to mind is that well needs to be defined by not just the commissioners or you, but by the citizens of Omaha, Nebraska. This is not the first time you all have gotten federal dollars. So the process in place will be no different than what you already follow. Accountability is important with our tax dollars that you get. So we hope that you're not going to be any more diligent or vigilant about how you spend this money than you do with our taxpayers' dollars that we pay you every year. But, having said that, the money comes into this county for reimbursement of legitimate COVID expenses, not because you lost revenue, because you were overspending, because you thought you were going to have some events come into your city. And I hope that we don't put the cart before the horse and start looking at refunding or helping cities at the expense of the people who also are suffering. And one thing I would suggest is that it appears a lot of decisions have already been made. When you talk about the, by implication, the accounting firm will be the same as the state, I would suggest you look at using Frank Hayes and Associates. Bring up a chance for diversity in small businesses arise. You're talking about hiring a part-time person you've already identified. Why wasn't that position open so people could apply for it? And that is just a problem with the county in terms of diversity. A lot of decisions are pre-made, and they're brought to the community as if you're giving us a choice. It appears that you already made that decision. You have time to hire a person to look at this, and that person needs to be able to, the people who apply need to be open up to all the community people, not somebody you've already pre-selected that's retired, not some accounting firm that the state has already identified. When those decisions are made, small business and minority-owned businesses never get a chance in the process. And what I'm suggesting to you is that reimbursing for COVID expenses is only one part of a three-part flexible scenario for those funds. It also says developing an infrastructure. I know that Commissioner Rogers and Commissioner Borgeson has been in contact with some community health centers. What we need to do is make sure that we have a strong infrastructure in these communities, because what we keep telling, what we keep hearing is that it is these underlying health issues. Well, COVID is colorblind. It doesn't go out and pick white people, or black people, or Latino people, or meatpackers. What it does, though, is just, it attacks people who have underlying conditions. When people do not have access to proper health care, then they're the most vulnerable. So I hope that when you're developing processes to spend this money, that you would consider putting together a community group appointed from a person from each one of your districts when it comes to the community money, so you can look at the gaps in services, the legitimate needs, so we don't get the crumbs left over after you all have decided that you're going to put cities over communities of the people who are most impacted. You know, one of the people who would be a great person on this committee would be Pastor Cavett, because she has really worked with the community north and south, and she knows firsthand. We have helped, my husband and I, when he get his bank statement this month, he's going to be surprised to know that he has given away tens of thousands of dollars into this community. Now, we may have to go look for divorce lawyers after that, but the point is this, everybody is trying their best, but the nickel and dime does not make a difference. We, as much as we've given, have not made even a slight impact on the extent of this. You all have 160 million dollars, and you can really make a difference in terms of preparing these communities, not just COVID, but with other pandemics, because this is a crisis now, but there will be other crises. And what you're going to have to do, as they're saying there's going to be a next wave of this, this money might not come again. So what you want to do is make sure that we have an infrastructure in place, that it's not piecemeal this money out to communities, but do so in a way in which communities are going to be better served long-term.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I have someone here to help me mute some of the folks I couldn't figure out how to mute, so if you wouldn't mind giving us a minute.
Fine. You'll be next, but give us a quick technical moment here.
It's our city, Omaha City Clerk, Eliza Bub.
If you go to participants, and then go to right here, and then uncheck that.
Sure.
Yeah. So now they can't unmute themselves, you'll have to, but if somebody wants to speak from the public, but you won't have that background noise.
Okay. So for those who are participating virtually, Mr. Chair, I don't know how you want to do this, but I'll have to come back up, and basically everyone's muted, and if anyone wants to speak, I'll have to come up and unmute all. And so that way, just, we're not getting any noise while people here are speaking, and then if we want to go virtually, all unmute all, but then it's kind of up to people to make sure they're muted.
Okay, thank you.
All right. And thank you for letting me make you wait.
I appreciate that. My comments will be better heard, I hope. Thank you, Chair Duda, and good morning to commissioners. I'm Steve Curtis, I'm the Finance Director for the city of Omaha. I'm at 1819 Farnham, and I'm here to discuss the city's COVID-19 expenses from March 1 through May 31. It was sent to Chair Duda on Friday, it was given to the county clerk, and it totaled 71.8 million currently. Our list was developed using the law, is signed into, is signed into law on March 27, with additional guidance that was generated on April 22, May 4, and then Stephen Mnuchin's public comments on May 14. The March 27 guideline, or law, delineated three covered expenses, and I'll just briefly remind us, it's for the public health emergency, it wasn't supposed to be in a budget as of March 27, and it was to be incurred between March 1 and March 20. And based on this fairly narrow guidance, we estimated our expenses would be about 15 million. The April 27 guidance further broke the cost into six categories, which we used to put our document together, and then the May 4 guidance and Secretary Mnuchin's guidance on the 14th of May were also used. As you may see, the city's document is broken into two, or it has two main summary sections. The first is our costs broken down by the six categories into the COVID guidance of April 22, and then a second schedule that shows by department, and then there's detail beyond that. So the first section is the, for police and fire, the entire three months of March 1 through May 31 have been included, and the question would be, well, under what guidance, what, under what guidance would that be? And it's this fairly clear statement. The fund, this is from the May 4 question and answer guidance. I'm not on a particular page number, I'm talking about the cost in total. Okay. The fund is designed, and this is why the police and fires total costs have been included, the fund is designed to provide ready funding access to address unforeseen financial needs and risks created by the COVID-19 public health emergency. For this reason, and as a matter of administrative convenience, in light of the emergency nature of this program, a state, territorial, local, or tribal government may presume that payroll costs, and again, they use the term payroll costs, for health and public safety employees are paying services, for services substantially dedicated to mitigating or responding to the COVID-19 public health emergency. So then Mnuchin went on to further clarify this on the Lou Dobbs Show on a business station about last Thursday, when he was asked if he supported a CARES4 Act, which would have given additional funding to cities and local governments for lost revenue. His statement was essentially, I think we've given them enough now that we've clarified how this funding could be used, because he said we also approved it to go to policemen, firemen, and first responders, so none of those people would be laid off. Fairly unambiguous. Approximately 7.4 million is for parks and library staff, and this includes about three-quarters of a million that was for PPE that went to the Unified Command, that went to the city, county, and a lot of other county agencies. Most of our part-time staff in both of those departments were furloughed, and the full-time staff was reassigned to do sanitizing facilities, sanitizing police cars, barricading parks, creating signage, creating distance learning, curbside pickup at the library, and creating web-based learning tools. These costs are covered on pages 1 and 2 of the May 4 guidance under the description of costs used for substantially different use than what they were originally budgeted for. The guidance states that substantially different use would include staff used to sanitize, enforce social distancing, develop online learning capabilities, and providing IT support. Then I would quote from page 3, payroll and benefit costs associated with public employees who could have been furloughed or otherwise laid off, but who were instead repurposed to perform previously unbudgeted functions substantially dedicated to mitigating or responding to the COVID-19 public health emergency are also covered. Another 3.8 million for costs is for the other departments, including DOT com, and those costs are also addressed in the May 4 guidance on pages 1 through 3, and they include costs for citywide planning for maintenance of city functions during the shutdown, reprogramming various cities, including the city's HRAS system to capture the federal COVID time requirements under the COVID's federal, or the federal government's COVID guidance, participating in the Unified Command, buying technology to facilitate offsite operations, instituting COVID-related policies and procedures, securing technology to conduct remote meetings, including the city council, paying for COVID-related leave, and it also includes some economic development costs that were experienced to Hartley Workforce Solutions in the Chamber of Commerce. The final group is 3.6 million, therefore unbudgeted extraordinary costs, a little bit like Mayor Grosser talked about. These items include MECA's losses of about 2.5 million due to the canceling of the World Series, and a hotel property tax payment that was in default by the current owners, since the city still by law owns that property. And while we weren't sure if these are covered, we decided we would include them for your consideration. So I'm sure you've heard by now that the city is experiencing a massive revenue loss to the tune of 127 million, of which there is no fix for revenue loss at this time. We've already cut 22 million in staffing and budgets, using hiring freezes, budget reductions, furloughs, and other things. The next round of cuts, which were estimated about 17 million, include closing libraries for the year, pools, community centers, certificate staff layoffs, and police taking fire rigs and stations out of service. And without some help, pretty soon, we'll have to make these decisions, because our budget won't be fixable if we don't do something probably in the next 30 to 60 days. And with that, I thank you.
Steve, thanks for coming down and sharing with us, and we'll see how the process handles these things from here. But a question I have also heard separately from MECA, they are not a part of these figures, I trust.
Correct.
Okay.
They are, but they're, that loss that I mentioned is our response, is the city's responsibility.
All right, because MECA may also be looking to us.
And that'd be, example, we don't want to pay them twice. We may still be able to get the NCAA to pay for that one. I was supposed to be on a negotiation at 9 o'clock this morning, but I was here instead, so.
We appreciate you being here.
Was that not sure.
Thank you, Steve. Other question, Commissioner Borges.
Did you guys submit this to the state?
I'm not sure. That's our intention. I don't know if it had gone there yet, but yes, that is our intention, and we will obviously work for the state as well.
Thank you. Commissioner Boyle.
Yeah, this, I appreciate this. Could you do me a favor? On pages 4 and 5, you've got the city of Omaha COVID-19 clause, March 1, 2020 through May 31, 2020. Could you also, over to the right-hand side, put the, put the cost of what it would have, what you would have had to pay, for example, on the mayor's total for personnel, what you would have paid had COVID not occurred?
Sure.
So in other words, I guess what the budget is?
Right. And remember, the relevance was, was a little neutered by that when it said that if you use these costs for something substantially different.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you. What?
I'm sorry, and the guidance does suggest that when you use these costs for something substantially different, then they are covered under the COVID CARES Act.
Well, I guess I'm looking at is that, for example, if we go to, go down to the police, where the, I guess the police total is 32 million, 18,000 dollars and so forth, I'm curious if that, what is the cost of operating the police from March 1 to May 31?
That's a good question. The total would be 32 million and 18,000 dollars, which was what I had said earlier in my remarks, is based on the guidance that Mnuchin gave, this funding was supposed to cover police and fire during this period, total payroll.
So if they were writing tickets for somebody speeding, that would be covered?
Yeah, even though our traffic division didn't exist then, and they were doing enforcement, that would be correct.
Well, I guess I'm looking for maybe a, you know, a...
But yes, to your, to your comment, yes. Whatever they were doing during that period, according to Mnuchin, is covered, without exception.
So they're, they're not really, that's a rule, but it doesn't seem like it's COVID-related.
I'd let you take that up with Secretary Mnuchin.
I'll give him a call. Thanks. No, I, I, I'm very much for paying the city, I'm very much for taking care of the city, but I just didn't understand that.
Well, and that's why the further guidance is pretty important. There's about 15 pages, and everybody probably needs to study it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Borges.
Well, and that's why, I mean, every single person on this board wants to help, in my opinion, we want to help everybody. But that's why this process, the discussion today about the process, is so important, because we can't take, just because somebody was on a TV show, this is what they said, we need to have concrete guidance on what we approve this money being spent for. So again, just the process is what's really, really going to drive us on this.
And I would disagree, the process, though, or the person that was on the TV show is the guy that's in charge of this guidance that was written and made for.
Something else that was, Ms. Stennis mentioned, you know, the thing about Claire making sure everything is spent the right way is that we have a responsibility, the federal government's going to come back to you, us, if we give the city 78 million dollars, and it turns out that they're not qualified to get 78 million, they're only qualified to get 72 million, then we got to come up with 6 million. So what I'm proposing is that with everybody that we give money to, that we have a hold harmless agreement that says, if we get busted by the federal government, you're going to reimburse us for what we gave away as a mistake, an honest mistake. So that's what I think we need to do, and I, you know, that's out there.
If we can.
I would strongly encourage, I would strongly encourage the county to have hold harmless and indemnity clauses, and I think the city would be willing to participate in this.
And that's what that was all about.
If it's a nonprofit, they have no money.
With apologies, the at-home people can't hear any comments from the crowd, so I would prefer that.
So I, my comments are finished, but I would, I would suggest the city would be willing to sign hold harmless and indemnification.
And I want to make it real clear, regardless of the question that I have, I am probably one of the first commissioners who stepped up and said, yes, we need to help the city, because...
No, and I understand.
We are the city as well. I live here. I don't think I've ever lived out of the county in the county.
No, I recognize that, and I appreciate that.
But, and I appreciate that.
And again, we weren't, originally, we were pretty confident that, and it still really isn't, as we all know, it doesn't cover lost revenue. But I think Mnuchin and others decided that we did need to satisfy a way to keep all police and fire and first responders from being laid off. So he was attempting to expand for that. So he was attempting to expand for that.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
This technology, you're going to get a chance, Ben, but we have a commissioner, Mark Kraft is, is next in line and then the, the new technology trying to figure out who's where. Commissioner Kraft, I have heard secondhand that you wish to address us. Are you able to?
I need to.
Speak. Oh, Mr. Esch.
Yes, I texted Patrick that I wanted to speak, but I don't know how other people will be able to notify us that they want to speak if they're remotely attending.
I agree. I have one other speaker that I am aware of lined up virtually after, when, when we get a chance, but I agree, by the same token, I also don't want to turn this into a call-in show, so anyhow, Commissioner Kraft, the floor is yours.
And, and I can understand that. Mary Ann hit the nail on the head. That was why I initially texted. We are responsible for the funding and we, you know, we can put a hold harmless clause in, but enforcing a hold harmless clause can be extremely difficult, especially if the other participant does not have money to pay us back. So this is a very complex, we have to get the processes in place, as you say, and I hope everybody understands what we mean by that. We don't mean we're looking out for our friends and family and business partners or whatever. We're looking out for the residents of all of Douglas County. And I've heard some comments in the past that people don't believe that's true. Thing is, it is true. All of us are very well dedicated to a very positive experience for the county. Thank you.
All in this together. I think I'm, okay, I'm aware of one virtual and should we go ahead and do that one now, Dan, while you're?
That's, that's fine, yeah.
Okay. I, Pastor Portia Cabot, I'm told, would like to address us.
I will unmute her right now. Okay, Pastor Cabot, you are, you are able to speak.
Good morning.
Okay, this, this is Pastor Portia Cabot. That was earlier that I wanted to speak because I'm typing in virtually, but want to make sure that we are taking into consideration that for the Douglas County Commissioners, you are looking out for every resident. The cities, they might have to furlough or lay off, just like all small businesses or other businesses had to do. That is not Douglas County's responsibility just to help those in the cities and their workers. So please keep into consideration, you are looking out for every resident from the newest or the newborn to the elderly that are in senior citizen or, or nursing homes. So please, I'm listening, but I did not want to speak on this issue, but I'm glad that you gave me an opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor Cabot. And, and, yeah, technology is moving up, but it was ten minutes ago, somebody handed me a note saying Pastor Cabot wanted to speak, so it. Good morning again, Mr. Salazar. The floor is yours.
Ben Salazar, let me, let me jump on a couple of these items that I think are important, one of which Ms. Stennis spoke about in.
Sorry, Mr. Salazar. Folks, I'm going to have to mute everybody again if we can't get people to mute themselves, so please take a moment to mute yourself and Mr. Salazar, maybe if you just want to start back up about five seconds and if the echoes or noises keep happening, then I'll have to interrupt Mr. Salazar again and, and mute everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, again. Very unusual that I'm introduced five times, you know, in one session. Thank you. Stardom, what the heck can you do? Serious issue, though, on, on, on the wishlist that's just been presented by the city, there's a lot of things that were read off and I, I don't have any detailed information about what was read off, but some of those things jump out at me as items that maybe we ought to really consider as to whether or not they ought to be funded, especially at the expense, and the pastor just, just mentioned this, of, of families, of our youth in the community, things that really need help, direct help as soon as possible, even as I speak. I'm going to suggest to my friends in North Omaha that because I have this concern, which is important before the, the money starts to be distributed, that maybe we ought to have an ad hoc committee between North and South residents to oversee the people that make these decisions, which could be not only yourselves, but your accounting firm as well. I think we need to have an input before those dollars are allocated or determined as to whether or not we think that's proper and whether or not it's going to come at the expense of our community folks. So, so I think that that's crucial in the process. And I agree with Levon that the pre-selection of this firm, pre-selection of this person, which I don't think a part-time person is going to be adequate for a position that's as important as this, I think, and, and I'm going to suggest again, from a community, South Omaha perspective, our group, our collaborative, has done a lot of work in setting up, and it's not really a command post. I would prefer to see a command post in South Omaha of at least a staff of three people, at least that many, because the needs are so diverse and expansive and they're going to be growing. We, we have now applications for assistance coming in. We have a small amount of money that we've raised, which won't be adequate for even those applicant, applications that we have now received, and we have been urged this morning to continue to distribute those applications. Packing houses is a huge issue. Many of the workers remain there out of necessity, but we also have legions of people that are out of work in South Omaha because we're talking about the restaurant workers, the kitchen workers, people that work in the, in the McDonald's and the Burger Kings. We have hundreds of ladies, women primarily, who have been laid off from cleaning jobs, cleaning services. So we have thousands of people just in South Omaha alone who have been unemployed and those thousands of people are hurting, families are hurting. I, I have a note here from Beto Gonzalez, who's one of our troops on the ground handing out applications at Boys and Girls Club along with Paco Fuentes, and he just told me this morning that he heard the other night that there's a family of seven quarantined because the mother became infected and she in turn infected the entire family. They're quarantined. Who's helping that family? We have a seventy-three-year-old lady who was surviving by selling perfume and she can no longer do that. So she reached out to Sue Aguilera at the city, at the mayor's office, and who in turn talked to me, and I talked to my, my, my colleagues and said, look, there's the lady who's living just a few blocks from here in North Omaha, living by herself, making four thousand five hundred dollars a year. She's paying a hundred and three dollars in rent monthly. She can't afford that. She can't afford that. She's trying to survive on three hundred dollars a month. I mean, these are the kinds of horror stories we're hearing from our community and this is just the start. So I think it's important for us, myself included, to oversee as best as I can what decisions are going to be made and what chunks, huge chunks of money are being proposed from the various cities and for what purpose. That's important to me. Thank you.
Appreciate your input. Good morning, Doug.
Good morning. Doug Kagan, four sixteen South, one hundred thirtieth Street, representing Nebraska Taxpayers for Freedom. Two short items. We would like the county commissioners to make public the criteria they're going to use for the dispensation of this funding so that the public knows where every dollar is going. The reason we say this is, and this is not an accusatory statement, but we've seen some communities in other states spend, start spending money on things not related to the COVID ID outbreak like parks and recreation improvements, for instance. And we wouldn't want the money spent to cover just lost revenue. Secondly, we want the commissioners to note that whereas the county has a very stable source of revenue for its general fund, that is property taxes, other taxing authorities like the cities, for instance, the City of Omaha relies almost fifty percent on sales taxes and other taxes, hotel occupation taxes, we call them nuisance taxes, and that impacts their revenue stream differently. So we'd like you to keep that in mind. Thank you.
Good morning, Larry.
Good morning. Larry Store, five oh one five Lafayette Avenue, Omaha. Yes, we all are in dire needs right now, but I'd like to point out one comment that was made earlier about where do you stop the spendings? You know, revenue and spending, the two go together. And for the last few years, I've watched many groups and many individuals come down here, including those with tax-exempt status, five oh one C threes, community partners. I'm not a community leader. I'm not a group like Doug's group. I'm a citizen. When I get before the microphone, often I've been called disingenuous, maybe even dishonest, cut off, and walked out. And I sit here and watch your antics. They don't see it, but this board for every citizen needs to consider who they're granting money to before you do it, because I can't change your mind after you do it. I went up and bought a used car, traded for another used car, just finished the papers yesterday, and I'm really mad because I have to pay sales tax on sales tax for a service agreement or for a loan protection guarantee thing, excuse me. I wanted him to rewrite the papers because he made a mistake, but he said that's not a mistake. It's a state law and a city law to pay tax on the tax. For God's sakes, it's got to stop. And you got to stop crying for revenue and listening to the mayor be crying for revenue because you got to stop the spending. You can't keep programs, do programs, do programs for that, new jails, and the numbers are going down anyway, but you still approve the new programs. You got to stop spending more than you've got. Simple.
Good to see everyone. My first time out of the house in a while. Good to see other people in a hard act to follow, as usual. Board President Duda, members of the Douglas County Board of Commissioners. My name is Aaron Feigstinger. I'm here representing Together Omaha Down eight twelve South Twenty-Fourth Street, as well as seventeen organizations that have signed on to this letter that you're being distributed now. The full impact of COVID nineteen on our community has yet to be seen, but we know that the economic and health consequences fall more heavily on the vulnerable populations that many of us serve. Already, we are seeing an incredible increase in food pantry traffic, requests for emergency financial assistance, and anxiety about economic instability, food and housing insecurity. Just a number that I pulled up yesterday, since March sixteenth at Together, we have served thirty, over thirty-two thousand households through our food pantry, which is seventy-seven percent of our total amount of households served in two, in all of two thousand nineteen. So we know that there's a need and we also know that there is a secondary crisis coming when our community begins to recover, when restrictions lift and months of bills come due all at once. It is imperative that a significant investment of funds be invested in stabilizing the housing of those in our community who have been made vulnerable by COVID nineteen. According to the city's AFFH study, forty-nine percent of the roughly seventy thousand renters in our community are considered rent burden, meaning they pay more than thirty percent of their income on rent. Data drawn from the American Community Survey estimates that twenty-five thousand eight hundred additional renter households in our community will be made vulnerable by the economic effects of COVID nineteen and will therefore struggle to pay their rent. Our neighbors are already feeling the pressure. An analysis of two-on-one calls shows one thousand four hundred and twenty-two calls requesting rental assistance between March fifteenth and May eleventh of this year compared to just seven hundred and forty-five in the same period last year. And in the sheets that you've been distributed, we broke down two-on-one calls for assistance by roughly your county districts, so hopefully you'll find that helpful. Our neighbors need help and you stand in a position to answer their calls. We ask that a portion of the coronavirus relief funds allocated to Douglas County through the CARES Act be used for tenant-based rental assistance. The federal government has determined that housing needs are in appropriate and necessary use of these funds because stabilizing renters now will stabilize the economy in the future. Making sure renters can pay their bills means landlords can pay their mortgages and avoids adding additional stress to the social service system. Additionally, keeping people in their housing is critical to the physical health of our community in the midst of this pandemic. We cannot ask our vulnerable neighbors to stay at home if they do not have a home in which to stay. The undersigned organizations stand ready and willing to help you get CRF funds to the people we serve and ensure that those of our neighbors impacted by COVID nineteen will not lose their housing as a result. And President Duda, as you mentioned earlier, you mentioned rental assistance specifically and that the county does not necessarily have a process in place. Organizations do have a process in place and we are absolutely willing to help you get those funds to the people who need them most, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have around this mask, of course.
Commissioner Boyle.
Yes, first of all, thank you for your work. It's really remarkable. I've referred people there and I've had very good luck. You do a terrific job. What I wanted to ask is when you talked about some of the homeless assistance or people who are being evicted, I got involved pretty early when the evictions were occurring down on the, down stairs and got the legal aid involved and the ACLU and a few others and then eventually the governor called a moratorium. I'm not sure when it's supposed to expire on evictions.
May thirty-first.
Pardon me?
May thirty-first.
May thirty-first. I, in the course of my looking for help, I came across an organization called MATCH. Are you familiar with MATCH?
Yeah, MATCH has actually signed on to this letter.
I'm sorry?
They're signed on to the letter.
I, you know, I gave my letter away, but, so I'll, I'll get a copy later, but they, they have an awful lot of resources. Is that what you're talking about, us giving money? I mean, I, I know they, they distribute funds right now themselves.
Right. So MATCH has a problem-solving, a housing problem-solving fund that we've sped up the start of that fund because of COVID nineteen.
Right.
That's largely philanthropic, philanthropic money, as far as I understand. We're asking for the state to, and for local government entities to contribute as well to the stabilization of housing in our community. I will say that the way that we've been doing housing in our community has been homelessness alleviation instead of homelessness prevention. So we need a lot more money, we need a lot more funds, and we need a lot more investment into that mentality, right? That we should help people who are being proactive and being productive and looking at their budget and saying, I'm going to be a couple hundred short this month because I lost my job because I couldn't get childcare and I just need a little bit of help, instead of the way that the system currently works, which is you have to be homeless, have an eviction notice in hand in order to get that kind of assistance.
Yeah, that's, and I did, I was working on, if I could, one last thing was that I spoke to the General Assistance Office and they, they have really been terrific in helping people. I did hear over there, and the person who's paying a hundred and some dollars a month in rent and so forth, and I guess maybe that was Mr., I think, might have been someone else. Oh, there's Ben Salazar. Anyway, the, there's a phone number to call that's the General Assistance and they, I'm sure that person would qualify, and it's four oh two, four four four, sixty-two fifteen, six two one five, and that's General Assistance, so maybe they can help some of those people that are really in a jam, you know, but, because they're, they are out there. So anyway, I really appreciate the work you do and I want to make some comments at the end about what I think we ought to be doing, so anyway, I'll wait till we get to the end. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Appreciate it. Thanks. I thought those eyes looked familiar in the back of the room. Welcome back, Mr. Kubat. Good morning.
Thank you, Chair Duda. Rick Kubat, on behalf of the Metropolitan Utilities District of Omaha, it's good to see your friendly faces again. As you know, the Metropolitan Utilities District provides. Utilities District provides potable water and natural gas, basic needs to heat our homes. And when we talk about basic needs, those two items and utility services in general are certainly at the top of the list. 83% of Douglas County's customers reside in Douglas County. So while it's true, we serve Douglas County, approximately 83% of our, of our customers are Douglas County citizens.
Got it. Thank you.
So while it's true that we operate in a multi-county jurisdiction, we do so to exercise efficiencies and economies of scale to bring down natural gas and water rates for Douglas County residents. So basically, just wanted to chime in here, and when you're going through your CARES Act allocations, and you're certainly early on in the process, that you give the basic necessities of utilities its due and proper consideration. That's all I have, and it's good to be back.
For those watching, Ricky used to be in our, in our office before he moved up. Commissioner Boyle.
Rick, I've got a tidbit for you that is kind of fascinating. That is, when the city of Omaha annexes property, the MUD, you follow it, and you go on. So where the water districts are, you keep going. That law was written so that there be an orderly transition and annexation. You know, the same law applied to the public schools? And when they started, where they failed to annex because they were afraid of the racial issue, so they stopped annexing, which led to now we have 13 school districts, part of 13 school districts in Douglas County, and we should probably only have a couple. But anyway, MUD annexes with the city, the school district's supposed to, but they stopped. That's the tidbit of the decade.
It is good to have you back. I
Good to have you back.
I discussed briefly with the governor who should be responsible for the utilities, and he, of course, said, well, you should. And, and then in talking to both Tim Burke and Mark Doyle, once I learned that MUD does gas and water in Bellevue and has some gas contracts up in Washington County, I thought, well, that means it's not appropriate for the county to step in. And of course, OPBD is in 13, 17 counties. They're, they're huge. Their, their service area. But the way you pointed out, maybe this is something that we can look at as we go down the road.
Appreciate your consideration of us. It's just one of those things, you know, simply put, the reason why we operate in multiple counties is to spread costs, to lower those rates. And as you work through this process, it's kind of a general thought, we shouldn't be punished for being essentially efficient. So thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Good to see you again. Good morning, Mr. Garcia.
Morning.
Take this puppy off.
Sorry. Gets difficult to wear those for hours.
Yes, it does.
Roger Garcia, 365 Olin Avenue. I live in 68105, one of the current hotspots, if you look at the GIS with COVID data. So, you know, everything that's going on is definitely of concern, not just to the community, but it's very personal to me. And I'll tell a little bit of story about how my sister-in-law got COVID as well. But first, I want to present my small wish list of items for the community. Mask was mentioned previously. It's been very difficult to get masks in the community. If you go to Walmart, Target, Hy-Vee, there's not a sale of reusable ass, or mask that you can go use, wash, and reuse again. So it'd be amazing if we can somehow increase that capacity to get more masks in the community. We know that we have a county of over half a million people, so there's a lot of masks to be given out in our county. We've had a couple events where we've been able to give out 1,000 masks per event, but, you know, the, the need is out there. And so if there's any way to increase the giving out of reusable masks, that would be amazing. Aside from that, there's a few other items, like increasing capacity for COVID testing. I know, obviously, right now, National Guard, along with One World, I know our Health Department is involved with the testing going on right now in South Omaha at One World, 300 tests per day. You know, it's a start, but if there's any way to increase that capacity, you know, one person mentioned to me that a one shift at a large meatpacking plant has 2,000 workers. So, you know, the, the need is there to increase that capacity for more testing. My sister-in-law got COVID recently from hugging her mother-in-law, who works at a meatpacking plant in Council Bluffs, then she lives in Omaha, and then went to go visit her mom, which is my mother-in-law. And then we had a scare within the family that, okay, we need to get my mother-in-law tested, because she lives with six people and works at a daycare. So I jumped the gun to start calling around, called the Health Department, called One World, called a few different places, but most people were just telling me, okay, just go have her quarantine. Just have her quarantine. Okay. I said, well, she lives with 600 people, you know, if we don't get her tested, she's probably going to infect those people if she's positive, because you can't really quarantine too well in a small house with 600 people. Plus, she works at a daycare, so we should know she was maybe affecting other people. So called around quite a bit. Most people were telling me, go have her quarantine, or to go discuss the matter with her primary care physician. But we need to remember that a lot of low-income people don't have a primary care physician and don't have health insurance. So that's another barrier in the attempt to get her tested. Finally, I was able to learn of a private clinic in the county that was offering testing for $200. So we, we saw that as the only option, to get her tested right away, and so we paid $200 and we got her tested. Luckily, she came out negative. But that kind of gives an example of how hard it is to actually get tested, if you've been in direct contact with somebody who came out positive. So if there's any way to increase capacity and testing, again, the 300 at One World per day is a start, but we need so much more than that. So something to think about there. Also, we can get creative and innovative in the ways that we reach more people. Obviously, One World, Charis Drew, are amazing places. They should continue doing testing. But other cities, like New York and other cities, are doing testing at churches, at community centers, where people drive up and get tested, or maybe they wait in line six feet apart, obviously, with masks. But we need to reach more people and increase testing. Also, you might have saw that in the World Herald just yesterday, there was a small little article about how Lincoln created a website that just simply lists different stores where you can actually get PPE and reusable mask at either at just an individual level or at a bulk level, if you happen to own the business. So I think there's so many things that we can do. I know that $166 million actually goes by pretty fast, you know, especially when you're having to deal with your own departments, increasing your own capacity within the Health Department, within the Health Center, obviously considering our police and fire, as mentioned, and at least getting them PPE and whatnot. So I know that these are hard decisions, but at the very least, my, my biggest wish list is just the, the direct health of our community, especially in these hotspots where I live in, of masks and increased testing would be top two for me as a resident. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia. Commissioner Boyle.
Roger, I was going to say, this morning, or I, before this meeting even started, I had been talking to Ben and did ask for quite a, like, I think about 30,000 masks for South Omaha, and, which is, kind of the procedure was, well, you just wait until you start doing those allocations. But that was a real priority. The testing really is maddening. It really is, you know, we're supposed to have the best in the world, or whatever it is that he says, you know. But we need a lot more testing. We don't need to be told, go, go home and quarantine, and the things you talked about, about the cost and all the rest. And then, of course, where she works at the daycare, it's just, it gets very complicated. We do need testing. We got to figure out, and I know Commissioner Borgson feels that way, too. And that, that's an interesting story about Lincoln. It tells where you can buy gloves and all sorts of stuff, masks.
Exactly.
Good deal. Thanks a lot. Thank you.
Commissioner Rogers, as the president of the Board of Health, do you want to comment at all on the testing going on?
Yeah, just a note is that, the testing cry is definitely heard, and appreciate the outreach, but note, the county does not control the testing. The testing access comes from other elements. So that's definitely noted. And Dr. Poor is in communication with everybody regularly, making sure that their capacity is up. So, and some of it, too, is also the availability of not the test, but the other things that come along with it, the swabs, all those other things that make the test there. So note, we don't control it, but the other aspects that need to come with it are an issue, too, not just the test.
Very good. Thank you. Commissioner Boyle.
Chris, can I ask you, how can we get that moving along so that we, we can support more testing? And we really need it here, and
Oh, believe me, Dr. Poor has a daily call at 11 o'clock with the state, and she's pushing that every day. So in response to the need over in South, that was the guard, and she's in contact with people every day, asking what that, that need is. But note, again, it's not just the test. It's the capacity of the people to give the test and the other supplies there. So those are some of the things that are there. But the, we're trying all that we can to get that capability up.
Okay. Well, I think if there's anything that we can do to help support you, we certainly would want to do that. And, you know, let people know, we need, we need this testing and all the rest that goes with it. I think the requests are awfully reasonable.
Yeah, no, that, everybody understands that, and trying to get as many as we can.
Thanks. Thank you.
Yeah, in response to some of the concerns regarding not testing but masks, there is a group of, a couple of ladies that I spoke with last week who started several weeks ago making masks. They have 200 volunteers or so. And so we are looking into, our collaborative group is looking into the possibility of setting up a, a South Omaha group to make masks. Grace United Methodist Church, Pastor Veloso has already offered his church to, he's got a couple dates a week where he receives donations of materials, cloth, cotton, that kind of thing. So we, we are starting the process to see if we can, in South Omaha, get volunteers to, to make masks for the community.
Thank you, Ben.
Yeah.
Commissioner Borgson.
I just wanted to say that I agree with the testing piece as well, that we really need to ratchet that up. But I think that there needs to be a update on the messaging of that, because I had asked that all long-term care facilities be tested, both residents and staff, just like packing houses are, because those are the two areas in which we see the highest incidence of, of cases. And I was told that, well, if we did that, we'd have to test them every day. And I get the fact that you can test negative on Monday, but on Wednesday or Friday, you could test positive. But you can't use that argument if you're not going to use it across the board. So everybody who's getting tested right now is not getting tested every single day. We are doing a lot of testing because we wanted to see how widespread our issue was. It's that point in time, because, again, all those folks that we tested that are negative could end up positive some way down, somewhere down the, the road. But I agree with you, Mr. Garcia, that the testing is vital so that we do know where our, our areas are. And is it as widespread as we think it is, but we just don't know because we don't have the testing. And so there is a lot of work being done and a lot of conversation and discussion about how do we get more of those tests in our community. And, and just by the increased testing that we've done, we've seen an increased testing in our numbers. And we've seen that we have not peaked. And so, again, I think it's imperative that we continue to try to get more of that in the community.
Thank you, Commissioner Borgson.
May I add a comment about testing for a second? Last year, I was able to convince Councilman Palermo to present a resolution to the city council regarding support of the Dreamers, which he did and which successfully passed. I was wondering if this board could not have a resolution urging voluntary compliance by these large industries that hire and, and have workers in huge numbers, like the meatpackers. I know that it's not binding, it's not compelling, it's not compulsory, but at least it would send a message to the community that you are trying your best to convince some of these industries and companies to do the right thing. Disclose their numbers. Be more public about what their efforts are, because this, this is, to me, has been a time bomb ready to explode. And, and I always fear the worst and hope for the best. But I know a resolution would not be binding, but at least it would send a strong message. Thank you.
Together on something now presented to the county board. Thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to address the board on this item?
Louise Humana, 3306 Burt Street. I just wanted to touch on some themes. I think maybe having our, considering our attitudes when we talk about some of these numbers. The city of Omaha was shut out of the money based on a technicality, that they didn't get 32,000, didn't have 32,000 to make the 500,000. So that was on the news. But I, I was, I was thinking that it's the same people, whether you're on, in Omaha or Douglas County. We're trying to help the same people. So like, a couple of public information is an important part of this. Maybe we don't know exactly how.
Sorry, Louise. Folks, please, if you're attending virtually, please mute yourself.
Having the public consideration being available, or how this money's being handled, there's been a lot of discussion on the process, how that's going to look. The Nebraska Accountability and Disclosure Commission has a website that does a good job about presenting information, especially on money. Maybe there could be a formal document that you guys use when you accept, like, there's been a comment on wishlist, but obviously, we have to go beyond, beyond that, having a formal document. But my idea was having a page document that you could put, like, just attach it to your proposal, because people might put forth different formatted line items, budget line items that they need help with. The tenant-based rent assistance, I think that is important. I'm not sure how that benefits tax receipts from the property, property tax. I think that the, you know, there's something there that the county can assist with so that it doesn't get bogged down. The economy needs to keep moving at a, probably at a slower, slower pace. There's been talk about reopening. Maybe we need to look at how the reduction looks. Restaurants, I hear, are operating at 30% the capacity. If they're going to reopen, they got to pull back and operate at 30%. And that's the restaurant and business. So how are other businesses being impact, that are being impacted by COVID? What is their planning? So I, there's a lot to, a lot to consider. In the next few weeks, I hope that, that things can be identified that are like the official or formal considerations. I know you guys have, having problems because you're getting different, you had, had a three-page document, now you're talking about a 15-page document that had the, the details on who's going, who should be getting the money. Once that's available, I, I think the community is going to have a better sense on what your guys' response is. The
The guidelines I'm referring to were put out by the Treasury Department. These are all public documents. They put out three and a half pages of guidelines. That's what I'm referencing. Not a county document, a federal document.
Right. So I was going to just make the suggestion that the county clerk does a good job at, you know, putting the, these documents available to, for our review. If, if you can do that, that'd be great as well. Thank you. I, I know that you're in a time, you're moving based on dates and stuff, but the, the access to information, that's something that we can always be looking at. Thank you.
Thank you, Louise. Would anybody else like to address this board on this item? That went quick. Okay, then, more, more, Commissioner Boyle. I'm sorry, you did ask for a, a chance at the end. I apologize. Commissioner Boyle.
I just wanted to mention that I've been contacted by the University of Nebraska Medical Center, and they did talk about, talk to me about the, their dental clinic, which serves mostly the, the poor, has mostly the poor, has been closed as well as Creighton's. And so they're talking about making some kind of a proposal, I think, to ask for some funding to help reopen that. Also, the Monroe Meyer Institute is needing some funds as well because theirs has been pretty well shut down from what I understand. I think at the end of this, what I'd like to see, somehow, I'd like to see us turn this, with the community's support, turn this into possibly the commitment to build a facility that serves the people who are suffering from mental illness. There is a great deal of stress and of mental illness that has come about in the general community, as well as people incarcerated and so forth. But we don't need to focus on the folks that are there. The general public is having a lot of depression and things that are happening because of this COVID and the staying at home. I think we need to try to figure out a way to build a mental health facility. I've talked to the folks in Sarpy County and they are very interested in joining with us. The county attorney, I talked with him. And so I think we ought to be thinking big and see if that isn't a possibility. If we're able to, as was suggested, fund the city for their actual expenses, I think we ought to be taking a look to see what we can do about maybe working with Community Alliance or someone else to really get this going, particularly UNMC. Another thing that I think we ought to pursue and call them out on it frankly, is get it going, is Medicaid expansion. The voters approve that and it's still out there someplace. We need to really get that into place. It's costing us millions of dollars a year, but that's not the bad part. The bad part is people are not getting medical care. And there's thousands of people in Nebraska that are just, well, they're destitute. They need this medical care that comes through Medicaid expansion. So there's no reason why we can't get that into place. It's just probably a political philosophy that's blocking it, but let's, let's make that a cause that we ought to be working very hard for as well. There was some good suggestions today. One of them came, I think, among others from, well, quite a few that were similar, about having an ad hoc community telling us what's really needed. I'm a big fan of that. People who are on the, on the ground, who know what's going on, who are working with women who are doing jobs and throughout the community. Pastor Cabot is a very positive person. The people who spoke today are very positive and made good suggestions. I think we need to bring them into the, as much as possible, we should have a, we should really be driven by the suggestions that they come up with because they know what's needed in the community. So I'd like to see that as a big part of what we do. And finally, I want to thank all my cohorts here for this meeting this morning. I think it was very helpful and, but we do need to commit to listening to the people on the ground and forming a committee that will deliver really needed services to people. The people in this community need help. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Boyle. I actually do have two more commissioners now. We'll start with Commissioner Kraft, virtually. Are you with us, Mark? There he is.
Okay.
All right. Welcome back, Mark.
And thank you very much. And I want you to know that I have confidence that you will do a lot of community meetings. I too have talked with the Med Center regarding their school of dentistry and Monroe Meyer. And I'm on the board of the Autism Center of Nebraska, which develop, which works with all sorts of individuals with developmental disabilities. And all across the spectrum, whether it's autism or any other developmental disability, they're hurting, not only from the COVID and the restrictions of being sheltered in place, but also from the lack of community, the lack of routine, the change of routine, and the cuts from the state of Nebraska. So, you know, we're going to be hit from all sides. And I know we're going to be very careful into treating, treating everybody equally. And again, Commissioner Duda, I know you and I are going to gather again on one of these days and discuss some of the processes and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Kraft. Commissioner Rogers.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd just like to formally ask, I know some people are still here from some of these places, but if, you know, we can make a request to those public entities that ask for funding, if we can make a request for them to send us their most recent budget and my ask is not, my ask is because, and I want to read it just to note that in the first guidance, there's three things that it notes. One of them is the cost not accounted for in the budget most recently approved for as of March 27, 2020. And it states that the CARES Act also requires payments be used only to cover those costs that were not accounted for in the budget most recently approved as of March 27, 2020. It says the cost meets the requirement if either A, the cost cannot lawfully be funded using a line item allocated or allocation within the budget, and B, the cost is for a substantially different use from any expected use of funds in such a line item or allotment. And then the second piece that happens, mentioned some pieces, but then there's a point that it notes that, you know, public function, function does not become a substantially different use merely because it is provided from a different location or through a different manner. So I just, that's why I'm going to ask for on record, there's some public entities asking. I'd just like to see their budget so I can look through it personally. And just appreciate it if they could email it to us through PDF or any manner they wish. Thanks.
Thank you. And certainly before we ever make any of the allocations, we can request any kind of information that, for supporting documentation that we're looking for and there may be opportunity for some of that at that time, too. Anybody else? Are we good? Okay. Then we will conclude that discussion for today. I suspect it's going to be on the agenda probably most every meeting for the rest of the year in some form. I mean, this is going to be a big, long process, so. Next, this brings us to a public hearing for a Class 1B liquor license for Midwest Golf Operations, Inc., Stone Creek Golf Course at 6220 North 160th Avenue. Oh, you weren't here for COVID at all.
No.
Good morning.
I don't, I'm Julie Horgan, 134 and 5 Eagle Run Drive. I'm the managing partner of Midwest Golf. I don't know if you have any questions, but I'm happy to answer any if you do.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions for her? We only have questions if you don't show up, then, you know. So, no, we should be good. Does anybody from the public wish to, during this public hearing, share anything with this board before we make a decision? If not, I will close the public hearing.
If I'm, sorry.
Well, you go.
Well.
We had a question about distribution.
Yes, yes, I should have said that. I, I just received the letter from the city or county, whomever it was, early last week, so I did not mail notification to the 240 residents until last week. So if they have to have that 10 days in advance, I said the hearing, or if they wanted to speak vocally, would be on June 2nd. And I spoke with someone here and they said to appear today and then if for some reason someone wanted to protest, they would then come on June 2nd. So I, they wanted to keep it on the docket.
Now, excuse me.
Is that right?
I misspoke when I said I'm closing the public hearing because I forgot about this. Teresa tried to explain it to me ahead of time. So, so don't reelect me. We will, instead of closing the public hearing, we are going to continue this public hearing until our June 2nd meeting because of that notification. So I apologize, I misspoke. The public hearing will be continued until everybody has the opportunity for their input and so we will not be taking any action on that today.
Great. Thank you.
Commissioner Morgan. She's been here most of the morning.
It's good.
That we put that up on the agenda so that we get that moving, so she doesn't have to sit here three hours.
Okay.
Even though she'd like to.
Yes. It was informa, it was informational and very interesting, but once is enough.
I know the feeling.
We feel the same way.
Very good. All right. I apologize for misspeaking. This public hearing will be continued until June 2nd.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Finance, anything you want to be sharing it?
No.
Okay. Legislative issues, I mean, they're going to reconvene and get back to action here, but I don't think there's anything particularly. Commissioner Boyle.
Well, I don't know where it is on the agenda, but the civil service report, there's quite a few vacancies and we had a little discussion about it, whether or not we were going to be filling any vacancies other than the 24 seven-day operations. So, and that does not include the sheriff's office. I think he wants five more people. So we were looking like, I'll let Commissioner Morgan speak for himself, but we were talking about not filling the positions unless they're 24-hour.
I think what we've asked department heads, and I believe this is, they're aware of this, is that because we, this year, we'll be passing our budget a little bit later than we have the last few years, and it won't be until we are into the new fiscal year, there are several departments that requested new positions in their new budget. And what we are asking of them is don't fill any of these new positions until we pass a budget and you see if it's in there or not. So it won't affect hiring a nurse at the health center. It won't affect hiring a guard at the jail, but it would affect hiring a new lawyer for the public defender.
So would it apply to hiring a real estate clerk, two of them? Food service trainees?
It depends on if these are new positions or replacement positions, I believe.
I'm not, I think we need to discuss this clearly because I, you know, we were talking about, I hate the word, job, you know, freeze, but I was, when Commissioner Tusa had it, I called it the thaw. But anyway, we need to decide, there's an awful lot of positions here that are, are out, being asked to fill. And I think we need to have a written policy on, you know, we're not going to hire, you know, a victim assistance advocate and we're not going to hire, you know, certain types that we just, that are not considered a voter services specialist, all that kind of thing.
Well, the, our position heretofore is no new positions.
Do we have that in writing?
We have shared it with the department heads. I don't know if it's in writing. They are aware.
What about the elected officials?
I believe that they are aware that they are not to fill any new positions until the budget.
Maybe you should have the resolution. Commissioner Boyle. Well, I think we ought to have something that says that, that. We can discuss with Joe and maybe go in that direction. Well, whatever, whatever the board wants to do, I just brought it up because we had talked about it and seemed to make some sense that we would, you know, that some positions just were not urgent and we shouldn't fill them because of the, just because of what we're going through.
Yep.
Okay?
Thank you.
So we'll do that for, when do we next meet?
Two weeks from today.
Two weeks?
Yes. Next week is Memorial Day, so.
All right. Okay. So will somebody prepare that? Who prepares it?
Commissioners.
Joe?
Yeah, well, we'll need to discuss that and get a resolution. I can work with Joe on that, but yeah, we definitely need some direction from the board on specifically what it is you're, you're directing. And so we'll, we'll work on getting that on for June 2nd.
Well, I think we better notify this, that the.
That, yes.
Hiring agency here, that not to, you know, go, go slow on certain positions. I mean, I don't know what to say.
Well, I will notify all of the department heads and elected officials that this will be on the agenda for June 2nd.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Is there anything under legislation that should be brought to our attention today? I'm not aware of anything.
Mr. Chair, I don't have legislation. I mean, I'll wait till, if someone does have legislation, I'll wait.
The floor is yours, Dan.
Just a quick technical thing. The correct version got before the board on item C under consent agenda, but it was just brought to my attention that the version on the web has a date of April 30th, 2018. Obviously, it should have been April 30th, 2020, which you did correct the, or approve the correct version, but I just wanted to note that for those.
Thank you.
Who might have been on the website before the meeting.
Very good. All right. Thank you. We do have need of an executive session for negotiations.
Yeah, labor negotiations and litigation.
Litigation and negotiations. We have a motion to go into executive session. Do we have a second? Okay, for litigation and negotiations. Motion by Commissioner Morgan, seconded by Commissioner Boyle.
Motion passes. Oh, excuse me, Commissioner Kraft, are you still there? Well, since I didn't get an affirmative vote from Commissioner Kraft, he'll be listed as absent, but motion does pass.
He's not going to be able to join us.
Six, six yeses in person.
Thank you. Motion passes. Commissioners Kraft and Kavanaugh are absent. All of their physically present voting yes.